At one time.
What were you doing this afternoon? The gym, I was right in the gym.
I don't stop that. I'll talk to him and tell him to get back up.
They're still good. They're like mad with their girls. My girls. I worked here with them.
He's he's on that committee.
Has got that. Yeah, it's all like a franchise.
It's just getting over here.
It's just.
It's just have to have some.
But it's kind of personal. I was gonna.
Well, it's.
Jim.
Yeah. Exactly. It's hard night. I know.
Yeah. Well, they didn't. They didn't make a report. So what's going on with the budget?
Thank you.
The group of those. Yeah. It didn't really work. It's not. Okay. It's okay. It's just enough for the.
He's got more. Both is. This is also person senior. You know. You're some baseball team.
Gentlemen. You're probably going right to baseball after this, aren't you?
We've already been to Astroville.
Oh, have you? How they doing?
Lost.
Hey.
My name is.
All right.
Good night. It is five thirty. We will start the meeting with.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I'd like to thank our people who attend tonight's meeting, and we will begin with the consent of agenda, A, the minutes of May thirteenth meeting and May seventh special meeting, and B, bills for May twenty twenty five. Any questions? Have you had any questions? That looks all right. Hearing none, they've got a motion to approve the consent of agenda.
Move.
I had a motion by Angela. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, carried. Uh, number two of the agenda is the object likes corner up today. And we have Mr. Kurt and Trevor here. Nice to see both.
Yeah. We need an air council on this. Scooby back. Trevor's just handing out our annual reports. We just want to take a moment. First of all, uh, thank you for your continuation and your support, Iowa Lakes Corridor Development Corp. We appreciate it. Uh, just as a reference, you know, we do serve four counties of economic development, Northwest Iowa, uh, cover Dickinson County, Clay, Emmett, in down to Buavista. So in totality, about sixty-four thousand in population, so big area, uh, but we appreciate your support and everything that we do. Our Dickinson County Board reps on our board of directors, Brett Johnson, obviously representing the city of Spirit Lake, Keith Divering with Bank Midwest, uh, Drew Heggie with Spirit Okaboji, and Brad Beck with Beck Engineering. So we have a great contingency of leaders on our board. Uh, again, we have four board reps for each one of the four counties that we serve. So I want to introduce our senior vice president of economic development, Trevor Smith, uh, is going to give an update on a few things that we got going on here as well. So we just passed out our annual report. I'm assuming a lot of you probably have seen that all right already. You've had that out ever since our annual business recognition, which we hosted back in January. Uh, we had about two hundred and seventy individuals from across the four counties in attendance at that. So it was a great turnout, actually probably one of the largest we've had on the record for the corridor, which which is good, uh, to see the attendance there and something like that. So I encourage you, as you have time, uh, to go through there, kind of gives an overview of all our annual report of activities for twenty twenty-four, which was pretty extensive. It included some strategic planning in there as well, so you can see what some of our board strategies were and what they were adopted here this last year. So I encourage you to take a look at that. Um, as part of our strategic plan last year, we did adopt two brand new initiatives. Let me have Trevor speak to both of those really quickly. One of the initiatives focuses on workforce development. The other one focuses entrepreneurship. So again, they're both brand new, came out of our strategic plan, and Trevor is just going to highlight both of them real quick.
Yeah. So the first one is, uh, the Homegrown Talent Initiative, which we've come and updated you guys on in the past. Uh, this year was the first year we awarded our first two recipients. Uh, just as a quick run through and a reminder of the program, so what it is is we provide six thousand dollar grants for, uh, young individuals, let's say they're from Spirit Lake, uh, they graduate from high school, they go off to college, technical school, or other type of training, uh, they then they come back and secure a job that we provide six thousand dollar grants, paid over four years because it's statistically shown you can get an individual in your community for four plus years, and there's a ten times likely chance that they'll stay here for the long term and develop roots. And what they can use those grant dollar for, uh, our student loan debt repayment, mortgage loan reimbursement, and ongoing childcare expenses, which are three of the biggest barriers for young individuals looking to move into a community. And so the first two that, uh, we were able to award, uh, were Callan Hin, who's a Spirit Lake native. Uh, she, uh, went off to college and then started as a nurse in Cedar Rapids and then Sioux Falls, and then recently, uh, decided to move back with her husband and bought an acreage out, uh, in rural Dickinson County, and is now really excited to be back here, develop roots, and, uh, start a family. And she works, uh, at Spencer Hospital, uh, as an RN. And so, uh, and then our second, uh, individual who, uh, received a grant this year was Taylor Crager, who is originally from Peterson, which is rural Clay County, uh, went to college and then returned back, uh, to the area, but, uh, to Lakeside, which is down by Storm Lake, where she works at Farm Credit Services of America in Storm Lake. And both of those, uh, young individuals have awesome stories to tell about their journey as to why, uh, they want to move and live, uh, here in the Iowa Lakes Corridor region. And so we're super excited to take them with us, uh, get them inside of our schools, get them in front of other young people, to try and get them to help convince them as to why this area is such a great place to, uh, live. And so we're super excited to do that, and, uh, the handout that you guys have on the inside, uh, of your folder is an invite to, uh, our golf outing, which is what we use to, uh, support, uh, our grants. So your dollars that, uh, comes from the city does not go towards, uh, directly supporting to and giving out the grants. These are fundraised separately, uh, through our golf outing, which we're very excited to host again, so hoping to see some of you guys at it. And, uh, we'll be able to, uh, have our two individuals speak at that, so get to know them a little bit more and to hear a little bit more in depth about their story. Uh, the next initiative I want to talk about is a big idea, uh, entrepreneur pitch competition, which we hosted April first, uh, in Arnold's Park, had five entrepreneurs, uh, from our region who, uh, submitted videos and ended up being finalists for this, uh, where they got to compete for ten thousand dollars and, uh, some seed funding, uh, for their entrepreneurial pitch comp- or pitch idea. And in first place, uh, was Cody Fuller with Fuller Radiance down in Storm Lake, makes custom lamp designs, three D printed, uh, which is actually pretty cool because he ended up going to two other pitch competitions afterwards. Got first place at ours, got first place at another one in Iowa, and then went to a regional Midwest one, uh, down in Omaha and ended up winning that. So he's got some pretty good seed money to, uh, to get his production up and going. So, uh, with the money, uh, from our event, he's able to buy a new machine that cuts his production time down from twenty-four hours to produce one lamp all the way down to eight. So that makes it a lot more efficient for him and able to, uh, continue his journey, and he's located here. And then in, uh, third place, uh, we had a, uh, local Jack Bauermeister who, uh, opened up Glacier Maid, which is a clothing brand and, uh, companies, uh, that highlights, uh, the lakes, and, uh, actually just opened up a storefront in Arnold's Park, which is pretty impressive for a young individual who's invested in putting roots in here. And so those are our two, uh, uh, items that came out of our strategic plan that we're really excited about continuing to grow here over the next few years.
Good. Thanks, Trevor. Yeah. Just want to give a shout out to Trevor for leading both initiatives. He did a great job of getting something from the grassroots up, and both of them ended up being very successful. And we had, actually, we had, um, advisory committees on both of those from across the region, including Dickinson County that helped advise and do it in picking the winners and stuff like that. We didn't, we didn't get the privilege of picking the winners. So.
Yep.
Uh, anyway, it was good leadership there as well. I just wanted just a couple of other things, and we'll certainly open it up for questions. Wanted to thank everybody who was able to attend our TIP workshop. Uh, last week, we held that Okaboji Bible Conference, and Alors and Cooney, who are TIP attorneys in Des Moines, were able to come up and kind of give a TIP one-on-one, uh, to some, oh, actually, to about forty people in attendance, who was an absolutely outstanding turnout. I know there were three, Angela was there and Brett and Greg were there as well. So we did get it recorded. I think Alyssa just finalized that today. So we'll send that to Greg or whatever. You can disperse it however you guys see fit, if anybody's interested in seeing that. And we thought maybe that update was going to be a little bit more intrusive with all the legislative proposals revolving around TIP leading up to that. We thought maybe it was going to be a little bit more in depth, how, but thank goodness there were really no major changes to TIP this year. Uh, we do anticipate probably on the legislative side next year, just like property tax, uh, didn't get a vote this year too. Thank, thank the Lord on that one too. Uh, we anticipate that coming back in, uh, next year. So thanks, everybody who, who came up and attended that. Um, we want to invite you. We got a ribbon cutting. You probably have seen an invitation to Premier Communications coming up on their new building. Uh, that'll be on June sixth at ten thirty. We'll follow up with an invitation on that as well, if it works for the group to be able to attend that as well. So a lot of good things going on in the corridor. Again, I just want to say thank you for your continued support. Anything we can do, um, to help benefit the city of Spirit Lake, that's what we're here for. I was out for a jog this morning and was able to run by the, uh, the site for Eagle Construction. They got that area staged and all marked out, and, um, as we're doing some of our visits with some of our larger companies like the Brown Meds and Polaris, and, you know, they, they know that project is coming and they're excited about it. I was going to put up a lot of really good units in this community, uh, some workforce type units, and so I wanted to pass that messaging along too. Um, that's being heard in the community, so congratulations on that project. And when it comes to housing, if there's anything, again, we can do to be as easy as a table, help facilitate, um, that's what our role is, and we're happy to, to serve whatever capacity we can to help, help support you. So, uh, with that, happy to answer any questions on behalf of the corridor. Otherwise, thank you and have a great rest of the meeting.
I just got a comment.
Yeah.
For sitting here for the last twenty years, I wanted to thank Moley for the change and positive direction that the relationship for the city of Spirit Lake and the corridor has now became.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that. It, it took a lot of negativity and, and, you know, just a negative vibe, which we had with the quarter. I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie yet.
Yep.
But that's, has changed.
Good.
And it's because of what you guys have done. It's nice to see your faces on a frequent basis.
Absolutely. Well, thanks, man.
I thank you very much.
What was the, uh, new position you had, or position you had ever taken? Is that, is that new?
It is.
So it's new.
That'll be a new addition, and it's great. It'll be a part-time position, Keith, and, um, we're hoping to make an announcement on that here the next week. We had some, we had a good amount of applicants for that, and again, that was part of our strategic plan, is we continue to offer services across the region and continue to, you know, grow. Um, that staffing was part of it, and we were able to absorb that, and so.
And what was that called again?
Obviously, it'll be an office coordinator. So it'll be a part-time office coordinator. So Alyssa, you, you met Alyssa, who's kind of up front, does all our marketing and communications. She's become so talented at facilitating events and projects, so we're going to kind of move her more into that leadership role and bring this part-time staffer on to kind of facilitate some of the other administrative things, to free her up and kind of from our other team. And our, our goal ultimately, honestly, is to grow this position that we're going to hire into another full-time position. So.
All right. Thanks.
You bet.
Excuse me. May I get your last name, sir?
Yeah, come over and tell you your name just a second.
Okay.
Any other single questions or comments to these people? Well, thank you both very much for the updates.
You bet.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
All right. Uh, my, and we learned the.
I'll say this, my name is in here, so.
Oh, sure. This is.
And powerful act, and we're going along my progress with.
How's your day going?
ITC.
Get names.
I guess good news and good news, uh.
So here is our staff.
Run up a little bit.
That's myself. That's Trevor, who we just presented, and then our other two staff are right there. So I'll wait. You can have this. Okay?
And since we started this, as you know, uh, they let us in early, in a sense, and so now we're officially doing the, uh, July one each year, so now, uh, fiscal here, it tracks with our fiscal budget here, and so the new rate we have is locked in for another twelve months. We shouldn't have to worry about talking about health insurance until probably next spring. It's been pretty well received. Very well received, yes. Yeah. And really, because we, uh, kept pretty much the same levels of coverage as well received, and then some other things, including some of the ways deductibles and copays work have actually risen better, uh, for a lot of the employees, and that's made a difference, plus remember the council and the priest, uh, the subsidy, and that was very well received.
Any other questions or comments?
Action do we need? Uh, we just need a, uh, a, a motion to approve, uh, a new, uh, the renewal agreement. Yeah. Make that motion.
All right. John made the motion for the renewal agreement. Second, second by Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, not carried. All right. And number four, discussion and possible action with Civic Systems Computer Software. Software, great.
Yeah. Um, I, I will. It's, uh, kind of all come together in a bit of a hurry at the end, so to speak, but, uh, Amanda and the other staff in the front office have been working on this since late last year, and it's been, for them, um, a very time-intensive process. A lot of demonstrations, a lot of time on the telephone, a lot of comparisons, uh, all while still dealing, still dealing with frustrations with customer service with our current provider. Uh, so appreciate the fact everybody's been very patient in spite of that. Uh, the, uh, change from our current providers is, as I indicated in some information, our provider came as a bit of a shock, uh, at the end last year, was to, uh, most communities across the state of Iowa, which had almost put it that way. They're a very popular provider. A lot of communities use them. And, and basically, it was, we're going to ship you over to something new, and this is what it's going to cost, and it's going to take effect such and such date. And, uh, they didn't really care about talking about much other than, uh, that was it. So, uh, anyway, uh, research was done. Civic Systems was chosen as the most compatible with our needs, uh, cost-effective for our needs. Uh, to be fair, there was another possibility Okaboji's going to, that they jumped on board with them really early, for whatever reason, they jumped on board. Uh, by the time we even had a chance to think about looking at them, they were already unable to provide demonstrations or turn us over by any earlier than the middle of next year. So that's how quickly cities were jumping ship from the current provider, uh, and was creating a lot of, uh, I'd say panic isn't too strong of the word among some communities that needed to change. Uh, so it was really about finding something that would work for our size and our needs. I think I indicated there are also some advantages to the, to the new system, if we go with that, uh, which will allow, uh, now residents to access some things about the utilities online, which I know has come up in the past, uh, as, you know, whether that's something we could move to, uh, instead of adding, move to a completely different system in addition to the accounting system, the new accounting system would provide that opportunities for residents and access to water bills and use and those kinds of things that, uh, I think people are interested in, allows them to track some things, and quite honestly, will, I think, cut down on a lot of communications here, uh, make things a little more efficient, uh, for the people to answer the phone and have to deal with those kinds of questions almost daily, frankly. So the only, uh, the only issue was the, uh, the three options they provided. Um, it's almost six of one, half a dozen of the other in terms of the total cost. If you look out four years, or three years and four months, basically, uh, there's really not much difference in any of them. Uh, my suggestion is simply to avoid adding and buying a new server and incur a lot of upfront costs in addition to their large upfront cost, uh, that the council consider option three, uh, which gets us a three-year contract, uh, gets us upfront lower cost. Um, and the way things are moving in this industry right now, frankly, in three years, I, we may not be with the same, uh, or there may be better alternatives that come along since it seems to be getting more competitive. Uh, and so I, uh, I'm hesitant to suggest spending a lot of money upfront on things that are sunk cost with, with the company. In essence, we're just renting license fees and those kinds of things is, uh, is how they vote, actually, even though it's strictly not a rental agreement itself. So, uh, that's kind of the bottom line. If there are any questions, happy to answer them.
You said this is a three-year contract?
It will be. Uh, it's not locked in at three years, so, so there will be whatever increases there might be each year. Uh, in talking with their person Friday, uh, he indicated three to five percent is been what they've seen in the past several years.
And the initial start of cost on that would be what?
Uh, if it's option three, it's, uh, just a hair over twenty-six thousand dollars, and then the annual fees would be, uh, starting at twenty-three eight.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions or comments pertaining to this?
Heads up question. Yes. Do we, so here says if you days your credit cards at two point nine percent fee, do we recoup that right now, or if you use a credit card, do they not have to pay more?
When we use it, when we have a, we have a provider now that we, uh, signed up with many years ago to allow people to pay with credit cards here, but they do charge a transaction.
Okay. So, so we do recoup that, somebody pays.
Yes.
Do you have more questions for Greg? Okay.
Well, was there Okaboji's doing this, and are there other, other?
Arnold's Park and.
Arnold's Park and Melford.
Melford. They're going to Civic Systems. Uh, Okaboji went with the company called that.
Oh, they did? Okay. Still, it'll be nice to have.
Yes.
Ever part.
Ask question, work together with. That's a good point. Uh, any more questions, comments for Greg? If not, then this is a possible action, so, uh, can I, now, in this motion, do you need to make sure which, uh, plan we'll go with, or you just want to play with it?
Yeah, if the motion would, uh, please specify, if it's option three that you want to go with, I would, I would ask that the motion, uh, approve an agreement with Civic Systems, and then proceed with option three for payment.
Okay. Uh, well, that being said, uh, would I ask for a motion to go with the Civic System, Computer Software System, have that three-year contract? Um, anything else to add to that? Great. Okay.
I'll make the motion as, as option three.
Option three, thank you. Um, motion by Keith, uh, second. Second by Brett. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, carried. Thank you. All right. Uh, number five, we're discussing possible action regarding the school resource officer agreement. Great. And I'm going to also ask Chief if there's any, you've reviewed this too?
Yes. Yep.
And what are you, are you, any concerns or?
No, nothing at all.
Okay. Thank you for your input.
I believe the only thing we changed was the fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
So it's the same as last year.
Okay. Um, so everybody pretty much aware of this contract from the past? Any questions or comments?
Any, any comments from the school? Uh, yeah, I didn't hear, no, I haven't heard anything other than thank you, and here it is. So they're happy to sign it, I'll put it that way.
They did ask for a three-year, uh, price fix, a three-year contract price, but I think for both sides, you'll need to adjust, negotiate is a good thing, so that's not in here.
No, that's correct. Yeah, that was at the negotiation stage, right? When we were talking at budget time, they were hoping for a little, maybe longer lock-in, but, um, they also understand why that doesn't make sense, and of course, as we know, uh, which wasn't, uh, really being discussed a lot of the time during the process, also firing resource officers across the country.
And remind me, yes, resource officer covers shifts in the summer, correct?
For us, yeah. Does not work at all.
He, he works for, back to the police department.
Exclusively.
Yeah.
Any more comments or questions? All right. This is a possible action, so could I get a motion to approve the school resource officer agreement with the school, please? And a motion by Angela, second, please.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, not carried, too. Thank you. All right. Number six is a resolution through the plan of specification setting public hearing and bed reading for the twenty twenty-five city of Spirit Lake, point of minus third addition infrastructure improvement. So basically, all we're doing right now is going to set the public hearing and the bed reading.
Set it up for bed. Yep. And excited to do so following the.
The review, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. All right. Uh, can I get a motion for, to enter the resolution, please? Somebody, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay. That was, uh, motion by Brett, second by John, uh, was doing a resolution, as far as a vote, all vote. Brett, how do you vote?
Aye.
Angela, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Keith, how do you vote?
Aye.
John, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Dave, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right. Let that be known that that did pass you down this day. Thank you.
Permission to ask a question? What was the number of that resolution?
What?
What was the number on that resolution?
Five is zero.
I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Ever, oh, what do you mean?
No, the, the resolution number.
It'll get a number assigned after the meeting, and after it's signed, it hasn't been assigned yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right. Anyway, number seven, appointing to the Old Rent Housing Authority. And this year that we have, um, Gary Katniss would like to be appointed to the Old Rent Housing Authority. Um, just glad to see somebody show interest for these volunteer communities. So with that in mind, I would like to ask for a motion to approve him of, uh, Old Rent Housing Authority. All right. A motion by Keith, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Angela. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, none, carried. All right. With that in mind, we are now moving into the communications. There's no minutes from any previous meetings here, so we'll move into the comments by the public. Everybody from the public wishes to speak, please come to the podium and speak your name now. All right. Hearing none. Okay. All right. Anyway, number seven, appointments of the local housing authority. And this year that we have Gary Cattiness would like to be appointed to the local housing authority. Just glad to see somebody show interest for these volunteer communities. So with that in mind, I would like to ask for a motion to approve him of the local housing authority. All right, a motion by Keith, a second, please.
Second.
Second by Angela. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, none carried. All right. With that in mind, we are now moving to the communications. No minutes from any previous meetings here, so we'll move into the comments by the public. Everybody from the public wishes to speak, who's from the podium, speak your name and address. All right, very young. We are now moving to comments by the mayor, council, and staff. Everybody wishes their comments?
I got a couple comments. This is more community involvement in the city. We couldn't get our flags down today because of the rain and rolled up, so we're letting them dry out tonight. Hopefully tomorrow at 10 o'clock, so if any of you are available and want to come out and help roll up flags, and I think I got most of the baseball team coming to help us, so that will work good. And hopefully, in the future, because I think probably you have heard from different members of the community, we will get the flags back on the courthouse. After two years of not being there, something has to change.
Why were they not?
Pardon?
Why were they not?
Just because of the person in charge, probably more than anything. I'm not in, I wasn't in charge.
I did hear a lot of, well, I heard grief about that.
Oh, I'm sure. I've heard more much here.
Oh, I'm sure. You're in there.
And just, I'll get you some information on it pretty quick, and we'll have some public announcements here pretty soon. We had the pre-construction meeting for 23rd Street last week, and so they're getting ready to mobilize and start construction here in about another two weeks. And then we had the pre-construction meeting for the media boulevard project this morning. And they, we found out, to our surprise, are planning on starting Monday. We're just curious, where are they going to start? They're going to start at the north end. I think at 15th Street and work north, and then the minute they get, and they're going to stage it, I think, two blocks at a time. So they're just going to do two blocks, two blocks, two blocks with each process, and then immediately after that, head down and start south there.
Are they going to close the street for that, or are they going to try to work around?
They're going to work around. So they don't think they need to close the street. They will have signage. Residents that live on Hill will be able to get in and out of the driveways, and they'll have somebody there kind of watching for cars that need to get in and out through. But through traffic will be, we'll just have to go around whatever particular two blocks they're working on at the time. They're also checking with anybody along their cables, this one in particular sometimes has deliveries, just to see if they can get a heads-up on like when trucks might be coming in case they want to open up and let them through or figure out how they don't like so.
And then just they're all going to ask, like, the...
Yeah.
23rd Street, are they starting on one end or the other? Is it all going to be...
23rd Street will start between Hill and Erie, and then Hill and Erie is expected to be closed pretty much throughout the project. There's so much underground, the sidewalks, parking, and everything else that's going on, that's going to be the most intensive part of it. And I assume it all gets poured at the end.
It start on the hillside or the Erie side?
I don't know. They, I didn't say. Those two blocks are the starting area. And then, so we're trying to figure out, you know, how best to let people know. Vec Engineering is going to put together a ladder for all the residents along there and make sure that's delivered before the project starts. Whatever contact information, projections for timing and those kinds of things.
Can you maybe have a note to whoever from the Little League Board should probably know, just so they can let parents know and...
Yep.
Have them agree. I can hit you with a contact.
Would you please? And then we'll have something out on Explorer Okabogi.
It's got to happen.
And I think, I think we'll probably put something in the shop in addition, just because other people will be affected and make sure people know we use the, you know, for that project, use the school's parking facilities and those kinds of things. We're lucky to have those now, because hopefully in six weeks, that also routes them to the concessions. They work. Which has been a phenomenal addition. Yeah.
Question, going back to number six. What was, I felt I should have, the date for the public hearing?
The bits are going to be due in, I think, on the 17th, and then the award action would be taken at our next council meeting.
Okay. So 17th, they're doing it?
17th, that's what we do.
Yeah, okay. They didn't ask you during the council?
No, no, no. In fact, they're kind of, they're kind of already on the way out.
Good.
The specs and everything, the certain known sponsorship contracts, and more generally, it's starting tomorrow.
Okay. Any more, any other comments or anything else? Please get a motion to adjourn. Motion by John, second, please. Second by Brett, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, none carried. Thank you, everybody, and have a good evening.
Oh. Is it, I don't know. Walk back up.
Yep.
I don't know what this was, to be able to do that all back. We have my invitation. So tonight, is this the first round officially?
No, it was okay there.
Oh, I thought we were starting to do it. Oh!
It's two weeks.
It's three weeks. Oh, okay. I'm not kidding.
I don't know. It's not sort of...
I'm there now. It's a place to walk. Thank you.
You ready to go, big feet?
Yeah.
Thanks, man.